This meeting to order, this is the Weaver County Commission meeting to be held this Tuesday, January 24th at 10 o'clock in the morning. We appreciate all who are in attendance today and welcome those who may be watching online. We will start today with an invocation by Commissioner Kara Gibson, a pledge of allegiance by Shelley Halassey, and I will also often enjoy thy magnificent creations. We recognize some of the challenges that come with our weather, Father, and we ask a blessing upon those who are affected by it. We know that there are some who have been affected very adversely from some of the avalanches and some of the challenges with the snow, and we ask a blessing upon them and their families that we all might be safe as we navigate through these difficult things. We are grateful, Father, for the reality that we live in a free country and in this wonderful nation. We're grateful for the inspiration that led through to its creation. We pray that we might serve to the best of our abilities so that we might be able to protect and defend and honor the Constitution and the things that make this country what it is today. Will thou bless us this day as we make decisions on behalf of our constituents here in Weaver County? Will thou bless them that they might feel empowered and able to share their opinions and positions and that we might do the things that would be good and wise on their behabes is our prayer in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
The audience please rise and join in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Appreciate the prayer by Commissioner Gibson and also the pledge of allegiance by Shelley and for the example that Commissioner Harvey setting on reciting the pledge of allegiance correctly. I think we did a much better job today.
Did we?
Yes, I believe so. Self-appointed. My thought of the day really isn't a thought. It's more of a recognition. We've had about three or four large storms roll in, usually with a day or two in between, and we have had our road crew running virtually non-stop, 24 hours a day virtually, for how many weeks seemingly non-stop. And sometimes it's difficult to see the work being done because, you know, maybe your road hasn't been plowed or... but they're out there running non-stop. Many times they can't complete their full route before they have to circle back around and start all over again and can't move to the next route. That being said, there's also equipment involved. That equipment breaks down because plowing is extremely hard on the equipment. So our road, our shop staff has been working around the clock to fix plows and blowers and other assorted equipment that breaks down in the process of doing snow removal. So they've been extremely busy. So the thought I have today is more of an appreciation, excuse me, that we have because we have been talking about this, for the staff that is out there when we're warm, when we're eating homemade food and they're stopping and eating another McDonald's hamburger if they're that lucky, running non-stop out in the cold fixing equipment to maintain roads for our safety. So we, as a commission, want to say thank you to those staff members that are working so diligently and also to their families that probably haven't seen them and wives and moms who are out shoveling driveways on their own because, you know, their husband is gone. So we want to say thank you to those staff.
I couldn't have said it better. I appreciate you saying that. I was just going to add exactly that perspective that sometimes we think of the individual, but we forget the support staff of the individual, the families and the children. And when mom and dad are gone, it's kind of hard to function normally. And knowing a lot of our crew firsthand, I know them well enough to know that those sacrifices are extremely real. So I appreciate you pointing that out, Commissioner.
Okay, we will move on to consent items under E. The first is a request for approval of warrant 413271 to 413269 in the amount of $1,617,153.33. Number two is a request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $693,422.86. And the third is a request for approval of minutes for the meeting held January 17th, 2016.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Oh, we still haven't fixed that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Sylvia. Our fourth commissioner, I appreciate that. Any questions or thoughts before we turn some time over to Mr. Hatch? Okay, Mr. Hatch.
All right, we had 82 purchase orders for $693,000. The biggest part of that, 63% of that, or $440,000, was for our roads department. And talk about planning ahead, there, this is a purchase order to purchase mostly supplies for road building, asphalt and other things, but also there's about $50,000 for road salt, which I'm sure they've been using plenty. 15% or $103,000 was for the library. This was spread across multiple things, but it was primarily building supplies and maintenance type of purchases. 7% or $49,000 was for the ice sheet, and that was primarily concession supplies and maintenance supplies as well. At the beginning of the year, there are lots of purchase orders issued to set out the purchase of supplies. 6% or $44,000 is for the gun range, and that is a purchase for sound abatement materials. And 5% or $37,000 was for the transfer station. That was also for maintenance and repairs, a lot of tire maintenance. We wrote checks this week for just over $1 million, 199 checks, and it was spread quite thinly. 18% of that, or $191,000, was our monthly payment to the paramedic service. 16% or $169,000 was our monthly payment for Weaver Human Services. 10% or $107,000 was our monthly payment to our public defenders. 7% or $74,000 went to the jail. It was primarily for food and then service fees. And 6% or $67,000 was our monthly payment to the Convention Visitors Bureau. Lots of monthly payments.
Okay, any questions, thoughts, or concerns? Okay, entertain a motion on consent.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent items as read.
Second. We have a motion and it's been seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor of the consent items being approved? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes. Thank you. Okay, we'll move into action items. Request for approval of a resolution of the county commissioners of Weaver County appointing members to the Plain City Cemetery Board. Stacy Skeen.
Good morning. I have posted the notes for vacancies for the Plain City Cemetery District, and we have received three applications for three vacant, for the three vacancies. They're four-year terms expiring in 2020, and all three of these applicants have been serving, so.
So Plain City is a wonderful place for those who...
Yes, it is.
It is an amazing place, and I don't live there, but close. And because of that, I know quite a bit about the cemetery and about these applicants, and I'm glad that they reapplied. They're all good individuals who have served well, and, you know, we don't always get much of a choice, and if we're filling three seats with these three applicants, I think we probably know where we go, and frankly, I think we can't go wrong with any of these. They're all good folks.
I'm appreciative someone wants to serve. The only thing I know about a cemetery is when I drive past it, all my kids lift their feet off the floor. That's all I know, so I'm happy that there's some people who are interested and open to direct that.
And I appreciate those again who are willing to serve, and if there are those who are watching this now or sometime later and they feel a need that they want to get involved in some way or form, there are plenty of boards in Weaver County that would, I'm sure would like to see some other applicants, but I'm very grateful for the three who've decided to serve another four years without pay, just for the betterment of that area out there. So with that, I'd move we approve those three names as presented for reappointment back on that Plain City Cemetery Board. And I'll second.
We have a motion and second to...
That is a resolution number five.
Number five, thank you. We have a motion to approve resolution number five, appointing Joel Freestone, Brent White, Ross Taylor to the Plain City Cemetery Board. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's a roll call, sorry. It's a resolution.
Commissioner Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our public meeting and convene a public hearing.
So moved. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded.
By the way, I think we should have Stacy every week.
I think she is amazing. I think it should be called Amazing City, not Plain City. An amazing scheme. So any further discussion? All in favor of adjourning our public meeting and convening a public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're in public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to consider and take action on a request to amend the side yard setback in the Ogden Valley Destination and Recreation Resort Zone in the Uniform Land Use Code of Weaver County. Rhonda Kippen. Rhonda.
We should have her every week, too.
I don't know. I don't know why I'm nervous this morning. Maybe it's the snow or, I don't know, a little off my game this morning. But good morning, commissioners. So the item that's before you this morning is a request to amend the side yard setbacks in the Ogden Valley Destination Recreation Resort Zone. Currently, the side yard setbacks is a combination of eight, well, it's an eight-foot minimum with a combination of 18, so the other side yard would have to be a minimum of 10 feet. The applicant is actually requesting to reduce that to a five-yard setback with no overall minimum. And there is some background as to what brought them to this need, but, and I can let the applicant's representative speak towards that if they would like. The planning division is in support of this as well as the planning commission on behalf of the fact that what we're trying to do in the Ogden Valley Recreation Resort Zone is create urban areas within a rural environment. So we're trying to cluster the developments as much as possible to then be able to provide as much open space for public amenities and preservation of our natural habitat in those areas. When this area was initially developed, it was developed under a PRUD, and so a lot of the subdivisions up there that are already platted currently have a five-yard setback on the side, five-foot side yard setback. And so this will actually bring those subdivided lots that are currently up there into compliance with the current code if this does pass. One of the concerns that was brought up during the planning commission was snowfall in between two homes and, you know, what kind of engineering elements would need to be brought into that. We've spoken with many, many of the designers that are designing homes up there, and they are actually anticipating this, and they're designing the homes as retaining walls on the side yards with windows up higher or no windows at all on those sides. So they are anticipating for those types of elements to come into play. We do believe that by supporting this text amendment, reducing the side yard setbacks to five feet, it will be able to allow the developer the flexibility needed in that destination resort to create the cluster village cores that are more walkable and user-friendly for their overall plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I just have one question. We talked about the side walls being designed or engineered so that they serve as a retaining wall of retainage. Is that something we're looking at as making a requirement when a set of plans come in with a five-yard? Is that going to be a requirement within the engineering to make sure that each of those developers or builders are going to meet that retaining wall structure?
Yes, yes, and Kimball Engineering actually reviews all of some of the building permits, and so that is something that they will be looking at, making sure that those side walls are engineered adequately to withstand snow loads from fall off.
Okay, any other questions or thoughts or concerns? Okay, thank you very much. Great job.
Thanks.
This is the time set aside for any public comment specific to the request to amend the side yard setback. Anyone attending today that would like to have public comment? Okay, seeing none, that will end our public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the public meeting.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're back in our public meeting. Action on...
In our public.
...word. Okay. Any, I'll entertain a motion to consider the action.
I'll make a motion that we amend the side yard setback section in the Ogden Valley Destination Recreation Resort Zone as discussed in our public hearing.
Ordinance two.
Ordinance number two.
And Rhonda, because of your explanation in the past, my concerns and questions with that and to support the planning commission, I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Chair Ebert?
Aye. It passes. So thank you very much. Okay, this is the time set aside for public comments for our public meeting. Does anyone, anybody have any public comments for our public meeting, not for our public hearing?
Good morning, Sylvia.
Unfortunately, you get me more than one.
No, we'll take it. We'll take it.
I guess I'm supposed to say who I am. Sylvia Salisbury, and I live in Ogden. I watched last meeting on YouTube because I wasn't here, and I was interested in what you were talking about, the pledge of allegiance. There's no comma after nation. I'd also like to point out that there's no comma after flag. I brought that up once when I was in a group, and somebody said, "Well, that's probably because that's the way we learned it in grade school." The teacher made the phrases, excuse me, made the phrases short so we could memorize them, but we have it memorized now. I'd like to see us think about what we're saying. "We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America." And on the subject of the flag, of the pledge, I would like to see it changed to something like this. "I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and I honor the flag and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." I've been wanting to say that in a public setting for so long. I don't ever see it happening, the change, but I'm grateful for this opportunity.
Thanks for sharing. You know, Sylvia, my only concern with any of this is at some point, an old fat guy like me, I have to breathe.
There needs to be a comma somewhere.
That's not a long phrase.
No, but I appreciate the input. That's, that's good to know, and then it's like you said, I think we, we kind of develop habits, and sometimes it's good for us to break those in a positive way, so.
Thank you, Sylvia. Okay, this is the time again that's set aside for any further public comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to aye. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Hold on, we may have another public comment.
Good morning, Mr. Egan.
Good morning. Rodney Egan from Uena Highlands. We are having a disaster up in Uena Highlands. We cannot keep snowplows in our area. Last evening, you couldn't get up 5950, you couldn't get up Woodland. I called Ryan, his cell phone left a message at four o'clock in the afternoon. It was 7:45 before a snowplow got up to our area. Our roads are getting narrow. I would like to take Mr. Gibson with me for a ride this morning and let him look at what it looks like. Down on the flatlands, the roads are wide, the, you can get around, you're plowing the roads over to the gutter. Up in our area, there's five, six feet between the curb and gutter and property lines and the, where the plows are snowing, or plows are doing. You have, you don't have enough room to drive two cars down the road. I'm, I've complained about this before. I'm getting nowhere. Last evening, there was people had to leave their cars on the road and walk home. We need some help. What do we do about it? Don't, don't look at them. Your roads keep coming.
Well, I, again, I, we've talked about this at the beginning. I don't, I'm not looking to him for...
To blame at all.
I'm looking at him because we're in the process. I can understand the concern. What I would say is that they are running basically 24 hours a day.
I understand that. I feel bad about that.
And I understand you have a huge concern and...
But we're on the hillside, and they're down on the flats, making sure that they get the roads as wide as they possibly can and spending their time down there, and it looks like they're scared to come up on the highway, up in the mountains.
I wouldn't say that they're scared. I'm not sure when you're talking about those roads, and I, again, Rhodes, I am not, I'm just, I'm just talking, but I'm not sure who's plowing those roads. Those may be municipal entities.
They're not.
The Highlands are us, yeah. No, no, no. What I'm talking about is the flatland roads that specifically may be addressed. I do know that there's, we have several avalanches, they're trying to clear avalanche, and so there's a lot going on. We can make a couple of phone calls again and see if someone can, can give you a timetable to respond up there. I think the biggest issue that we have that I think that we've started the process of working on today is better communication so that they can call you and you can expect something at this time so that you're not left kind of out in the dark. I think that would help. So can we start there?
Well, I've, I've called them before, and the only way that I can get them to call me back is to call Brother Gibson, or Mr. Gibson, excuse me. Bishop.
Call me whatever you want to call me.
We're just, we're just, we're befuddled. We don't know where to turn. The road, I mean, you can't get up the road, you can't, you can't pass on the road. I, I called the county last fall, got ahold of Matthew Bell, and Matthew Bell came up and looked. We had trees hanging over on the road, and he promised me that they'd get trimmed, and it didn't happen. Scott said he would come up and trim them. He hadn't forgot about it, and I'm sure he's going to come and trim them. I just don't know what year.
2017.
Rodney, you're saying you couldn't get up 5950 yesterday?
They, there was, there's cars left on 5950 overnight.
There's cars left all over the city on the east bench. I, I'm familiar with that. There was a lot of people that I'm familiar with that parked at local churches and businesses and had to walk home the last couple of nights. Not that that's any excuse.
Highway 89 was a mess yesterday.
Highway 89 was closed yesterday. We had several roads in Weaver County closed. I'm, again, not making an excuse, but just trying, I know where you live.
Oh, does that scare me?
That wasn't meant like that. I'm looking on a map right now, so I'm just...
It's on Melanie Lane.
I know right where he is.
If you're afraid of hugs, then he...
It was just information. I'm looking where you are, and so...
I'm here because I'm not getting any results from the road department.
Well, they did come up last night at what time, 7 o'clock?
Quarter to 8.
And I can say, being a resident of unincorporated Weaver County like you, I was probably 10:30 before they got to me. So you got service before my neighborhood got service, which was okay. That just, I was prepared under the circumstances. I don't, I don't know how else to answer your question either, because I've, I've talked to you and followed through with that commitment that I gave you. They're under, just, they have priorities, A, B, and C. I don't know what Melanie Lane or 5950 is on the priority. I appreciate the fact that you're down to one lane. I'm experiencing the same thing in my neighborhood.
In years past, they've sent a road grader up there to widen those roads. In years past. I haven't seen that road grader for the last two years. Of course, last year was not a snow year.
Yeah, and some of it is just the staff issue. The staff is running basically 24 hours a day, and we've had so much snow in specific areas of the county that they can't almost stay on top of it, and so...
And I would also submit, being from out that area, too, as I've looked at other parts of the county, we're getting an inordinate amount of snow in our area than as we look in some of the other areas. Not to say that North Ogden and Pleasantview isn't getting their share, but it seems to me like it's coming right there to Weaver Canyon and then just dumping everywhere. It's, it's been a ton. We have nowhere else to push it. I've got nowhere else to go, even on the sides. I mean, I can't get, I'm about shoulder, I can't throw it any higher, you know? So I don't, I know what you're saying, so...
Well, I have a, so my barber, my barber has this sign on her...
You need a barber?
Yeah. She has a...
Half price.
She has a sign on her, went on her mirror that I look in that says, "I'm a beautician, not a magician," and I think that's meant for me, but I, again, I don't mean to make light of this because I understand, Rod, what we're, what you're going through. I, we've heard from, from your community and others. I would just say, we're equal opportunity. We're hearing from just about every community right now, and it is, we're, we just, we're just behind, and we're working really hard to catch up, but it's tough, and we're, we're hearing what you're saying, and, and I think that, as Commissioner Ebert said, it's been probably the largest topic of conversation over the last two weeks in our office because of the crisis that we're in. And when you said they might be scared, they might actually be just a little bit because they have had some, you do have more challenges with hills, some, some serious challenges. We've had a couple of trucks that have lost rear ends up on those exact hills, and that's no reason for them not to go, but, but we do have those challenges that we have to deal with, and it's, to be honest, there's only a certain number of drivers that can handle those types of conditions, and it's a little bit of a challenge, so we're, we're working on it. I'm hoping we're...
So I go home and wait for the spring thaw, or what?
Let's start with...
Hopefully, it's not that drastic.
Are you gonna go for a ride with me today?
Me? Is there a sandwich involved?
I'll, let's talk after the meeting.
Thank you.
So I would just like to express appreciation for those who've taken a moment to really talk to us, come in, talk to us about an issue or concern. It means a lot. It really puts... It really puts a face to an issue, and so we'll make some phone calls and hopefully open up some lines of communication and really express the concerns and specific challenges that you're facing. Again, thank you, Sylvia. We agree with the Constitution. That's where we need to be focused, so. Okay, any further public comment? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I already made it.
Seconded? It was seconded?
Now I will second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you very much, and thank you for attending.